Monday, July 27, 2015. Health variants on 13 Cushman Avenue to discuss and action to our... Action relative to Highway Surveyor Charles McHunder relative to Chapter 90. Project review. Improve the road opening for Richmond Road Bridge. Review or approve hopefully a one-day liquor license for Cultural Camp at Welch. Discuss Amazon, sign an aggregation letter. We won't be signing the Stoffel certificate. That's not ready, so I'm going to redline that. And discuss a letter from Lauren regarding 4343D Priority Development and ambulance abatements for the month of July end of 2013 submitted by Fire Chief. Okay. Board of Variants, what's going on? Kevin?
Good evening, Bob. We have two variants requests. Well, seven, Cushman?
Thirteen.
Thirteen, sorry. Seven we just did today. Seventh about thirteen, Cushman. First variant requested is six feet from a property line. Requirement is 10 feet. And the other one is onsite well. Requirement is 100. And they're only at eight.
Do you have a recommendation?
I had wrote here, I recommend this as long as when it's completed, they get a deep restriction to make it a maximum of three bedrooms. They're giving any future expansion or flow. And the other one is, and I explained to the homeowners, they would escrow testing within a year for the new owners, for the water analysis on the well. And they agreed with that.
Make a motion to approve as recommended by the Board of Health.
I second that. Have a motion made to approve. Seconded, made seconded to approve variants on 13 Cushman Avenue as recommended by the homeowners' favor.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, Julie.
It was nice to see you, even though it's so briefly.
I'll be signing this to the Chairman of the Board.
That was the easiest thing out?
That was it.
So tomorrow morning, you can get going on that?
Okay.
Get your moving along.
Good. He's up there. Thank you very much. But we can, we can keep going until he walks in.
Okay. Do we have to approve? Do we have a road opening permit for the Cushman Road Bridge?
He thought it was 6:30.
Okay. We've got everyone's heading.
Do you want to approve my daily place?
This is the chapter number nine. There you sign it. Next on the agenda is to approve a one-day liquor license for Society Cultural at Camp at Welch on 8, 9, 215. Apparently this is something they do every year?
Yes.
Are we approved it every year? So I've entertained a motion to approve this.
I'll make a motion to approve with discussion. Is that the one that we usually waive the fees or no?
No.
Okay.
Okay. Have a motion made and I second that. To approve the one-day license for Society Cultural at Welch. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. How are you doing?
Oh, he's right there.
Chuck, you ready?
I'm ready. You've got my great work.
I got your base work.
I don't know what the amounts are.
I got them in front of me.
We've got four roads that we're going to do. Three in Green Acres, part of Dunham Road, Rebecca Road, part of Malbone Road, and then that contribution to the South Main Street project. The totals are all there. We've got approximately 415,000 in Chapter 90. That comes to about 402,000. So, kind of close, but we should be pretty good.
I'll make a motion to approve the South Main Street in the amount of $108,360.
Motion made and I second that to approve Main Street. The amount of $108,360. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed. Now it passes.
Make a motion to approve Malbone Road, that's from Richmond Road to Amanda, in the amount of $55,100.
Motion made and seconded to approve $55,100 road improvement as stated by Selecton Pacheco.
Okay.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to approve Dunham Road. That's from Rodney Drive to Rebecca Road in the amount of $69,237.50.
Motion made and I second it to approve as stated by Selecton Pacheco, the amount of $69,237.50 for Rodney Drive to Rebecca Road. Have a motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll make a motion to approve Rebecca Road, and that's from Howland Road to Dunham Road, in the amount of $169,700.
Have a motion made and I second that to approve the road work on from Howland Road to Dunham Road, the amount of $169,700. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chuck, do you have a road opening permit for Richmond Road Bridge?
Not in the signature file.
Hallie's got it.
It's right in the signature file.
Hallie's got it. I was on with them today. They're looking quite possibly next Monday, starting to start the preliminary excavations. As far as closing the road, they're not positive yet as of when. I told them that we need it, we'd like to have at least a week's notice. The message boards were supposed to go into play today, just for warning people. I don't know if they actually got a... They're onsite, they're placed, I don't know, but I don't know if they're actually activated yet.
Yeah.
Okay.
I've been mid-afternoon.
South Main Street, I was asked if the board could send a letter to Stop &amp; Shop, just informing them that we are contributing that $100 and change. And that, that rest keeps them at bay, and then they know that we're committed to the project and that we're going to move forward. So I would ask the board if they could send a letter to Stop &amp; Shop, just basically stating that we're on board. I was approached today, this is a totally different subject, and Kevin's been hounding me about mowing the dump. I was approached today by somebody who offered to mow the dump for the hay, basically it's going to just be construction hay, and had no charge to him. Said that he'd be more than willing to sign any kind of waiver the town would have as far as liability. But it sounds to me like a winging situation.
Yeah.
He goes in, mows the whole place, bales it, that'll pick up all the cut grass that's there, so it'll be cleaner when they're all said and done. They haul all the hay and it's a done deal. I mentioned it quick to Kevin, so I told him to think on it, and I just figured I'd mention to you that you guys can start the thought process.
Can they get enough straight runs for the vents?
They can, they can handle that. That changes some. Yeah, you guys take, you can sign that, you give it to Hallie, whatever, I'll get it to her. I said, to me it sounded like a win-win situation, but...
Yeah. And we need to take a look at any flag on the vents or something.
All those vents stick out at least four or five feet, so...
How high is the hay?
Eighty-two foot.
Okay.
Kevin's been hounding me about getting a hole, we just, we just don't have the time or manpower to get up there.
I saw Vicki trying to do it the other day, with that little tractor.
That's right. And I told him, I said, that would be the next...
It's going to be ridiculous.
I could send one of my tractors up there, and if they got a free chance, they could pick away at it, but it seems like if you've got somebody that's willing to go in there...
And you can use three. Yeah, that sounds like a good price.
As long as we can get a sign off on that, and as long as it's approved by open minimum duty or on my, then I, then that's fine.
Well, I plan at the scene, you can do it with a Jewish.
So Jack, will you look into that?
Yeah.
Also, I'll make a motion to send a letter to Stop &amp; Shop, letting them know that we've secured the money for the South Main Street improvement.
I second that. Have a motion made and seconded to send Stop &amp; Shop a letter. You see that we're on board with the main, South Main Street improvement. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We still have this road opening permit, so...
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the road opening permit for our Richmond Road Bridge.
And I second that. So we have a motion made and seconded to sign the road opening permit for Richmond Road Bridge. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The project will be done completion when? Do you know?
Which project?
The bridge?
The bridge. They're saying October 31st.
All right. So we should send a letter to the schools?
I was, I was going to suggest that we, and I can call Kenny at the bus company, but we probably should go...
I think you need to go to the...
To the top.
Right.
Let them figure out that they're going to need another bus probably for at least two months. It may be sooner, because what the grand scheme is, hopefully if we can get the road tore down, built back, at least in the binder, as soon as they're in binder and they can open up, they probably won't open the road to everybody, but then open the road up to emergency vehicles and police and fire, yeah, sorry, school buses.
So are you thinking...
That could be end of September. They're still going to have to, there's a period of time, whether it's three weeks or five weeks, they're going to need to have that bus pick up those eight kids on the other side. Whether they can do it with a van, and it's eight kids, but that's scattered between the three schools, so it might be, this kind of seems silly.
We did some different bus runs, probably.
Right. It seems to be really silly to run a huge bus to pick up two kids, because it's only, I don't know if they would have that one bus, say the bus that picks up the kids in Green Acres, whether that bus has room, whether they would send that bus around to pick up the kids. When I talked to Kenny months ago when we were talking about it, he was like, oh no, that's going to be a separate bus. And that seems kind of silly to run 65-passenger bus for two kids. But that, yeah, it would be a good idea to send a letter to the superintendent.
So do you think it would be prudent to do it longer than necessary? They were charged us by the day anyway, just in case we run into problems, so I would say like maybe by October 31st, just to be on the safe side?
That's the date they're supposed to be done.
Okay.
So with any luck, if they have any problems, the, as possible, they could be done before the start of school.
Right.
If the weather holds up and everything goes flawlessly. But you know, it's a can of worms. Right now, they have no idea what's underneath that deck. So it's a big mystery right now.
All right. Then Jack, can you send a letter to the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Manager, letting them know that the Richmond Road Bridge will be closed until, well, 10:31 because of repairs?
Yeah.
And then we'll need to get like a cost on that per day?
Yeah.
And then we'll have to place a warrant article, I would imagine, because it will be above and beyond the transportation cost.
And I'll, I'll probably have this in the...
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Have a good night. Next on our agenda is to sign the aggregation letter, which I have made to approve.
Yeah.
As you know, this is the aggregation project, an effort to combine savings by communities joining together and putting their total electricity load together and going out to bid as a group. And this letter is to the Legislative Delegation, in particular Senator Rodrick, who's been very helpful. We went to the, Lee and I went to the opening of the NRG Solar Facility on Locust Street today, and the Senator was there, and they were praising him for his support on green matters and matters relating to solar energy development in the state. This is another way of trying to save our taxpayers and business people some money. And I'm sure that the board has supported this all along, I'm sure they'll be doing it again.
Yeah. And I entertain a motion to sign the aggregation letter.
I'll make that motion.
Have a motion made, and I'll second that to sign the aggregation letter. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Done. Next on our agenda is to discuss a letter from Lauren Moreau regarding the 43D Priority Development.
So...
You're out.
I'm here. I'm here. Initially...
She's good, no matter.
I don't think it matters.
Okay. Next on the agenda, I had here to discuss Amazon. Just perhaps we could get a brief update from Selecton Pacheco as to where we are as far as site...
There was some bantering back and forth as to whether they needed a site plan review and not, and blah, blah. So until all the parties got together and figured out that that would be the best way for them to go, and I think that George, who is actually the project director of the building anyway, he wants to ensure that everything is done properly, and you know, yes, they're on their schedule, but he just wants to make sure that everything is done according, and no one can ever come back and question whether they took shortcuts or anything like that. So it looks like everything's moving along, and the application, where is that?
It's coming in this week, I'm told, by a number of different parties. I've been on the phone with two representatives from Langin and George from Tremel Crow, and they are working very diligently to get us what we need. I was actually just on the phone with them at 5:00.
So what'll happen next is during the site plan review, the department heads that are involved in this will have to do a sign off on it. And then the planning board will have several meetings and hoping that they can come to a resolution quickly, because a lot of the work has already been done by Paul River throughout their site plan review, so it might not be necessary to do, you know, double calculations on one thing and not another. And so it looks like everything is going forward. They're in for an August 18 hearing meeting.
Where are they as far as taxes, that thing?
That's Paul River Redevelopment Association, and I think that that's something that we'll have to discuss. I did send a little FYI to them, and they're like, you're really assessing us after we did all this work on the land? And I'm like, you'd have to go through the right channel, like, you know?
Exactly.
We don't have, I don't, you don't have that authority to say nay, but I certainly understand that, you know, they spent a lot, a significant amount of money on developing the land, so it could be, you know, further, further developed by Amazon or any other business that comes in. But yeah, that's still there. It's 98 on that land and 64 on the other parcel, so...
So we'll have to move on that in some way, shape, or form?
Yeah.
Thank you. So anyway, is that it pretty much?
That's it. We're looking, I mean, I think they're looking for this to be all wrapped up by the end of August. And I think that everybody seems to be on board with that, so I think they'll hit their timeline and everybody's good to go.
Okay. Thank you, Lauren.
Well, do you want to hold on that, and while they're here, maybe just go wait to the planning board stuff?
Okay.
So then that way they can leave?
Perfect.
Are you okay with that? I know you'd want to stay, but...
No, I look good with that.
Okay, good. Guys, come on up.
I guess we're all aware with the retirement of Bob Raymond, we need to appoint someone to the board to get us back up to full batting order.
Okay.
I think we've, Deb Robbins has been our associate member for some time now. She showed an interest. She's taken some continuing education programs with Lauren, professional development classes, and I think it's the only, it's like a natural progression to me, you know?
Yeah.
Someone shows their interest, they're appointed to an associate member, kind of bringing them up to speed, because obviously, you know, the rules and regs are what you're going to get your hands on around. So I think it'd be, should be an asset to the board.
She's made almost all the meetings, too.
So she's up to speed on everything?
Yes.
You know, and it takes, I've been on it for 10 years, and there's still things that, and you know, it's just, if you're not...
Right. I hear ya.
And I think it's easy to get elected to a board, it's easy to be appointed to a board, for someone to then show the interest to go and take these classes and drive into Worcester and all these other places to better themselves for the job they're going to do for free for the town. I think they should be rewarded, and I think we should move forward.
Let me just read it. She just did a quick letter to us, she would like to be considered as a full-time member of the Free Town Planning Board, and she is presently an associate member, but I just want that to be on the record, that she just submitted the proper paperwork.
Submitted the letter. And she asked the board if she had to be here, and the chairman said, no, you didn't have to be here. Simple as that.
That was very nice.
So I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to appoint Deborah Robbins as the full-time member of the Free Town Planning Board.
Have a motion made and I second that to appoint Deborah Robbins to full-time membership for the Free Town Planning Board. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Done.
Thank you.
Do you need another associate, or...
We would, want to advertise another associate.
Yeah, I think we should put in, and maybe hopefully we can generate some more interest, and maybe get a professional person, and...
So do you want us, I mean, I can, we can do that right now to post it?
Great. Perfect. That'd be great. I mean, then come back again. No, that makes sense, Lisa, that makes sense.
All right. So I'm going to make a motion to post an opening for an associate member of the planning board.
Seconded. And a motion made and seconded to post associate membership for the planning board. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then when you feel like you have the necessary amount of people...
Yeah, well, let's go for a little bit, so that we can, and see what happens.
All right. I'd rather have it done now than come back.
Agreed.
Do you need anything else, Lauren?
Um, no. Can I, just quickly, can I do a press release to advertise for that position?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Okay. And we'll do the posting on the website also.
Sounds good. All right. Thank you so much.
You guys can stay if you want.
No, I think I'm going back to the cake.
Is the board open? But why? It's so much better here.
It'll rain all day there, so...
If we look back up to the ambulance abatements for the month of July and end of 2013 submitted by the Fire Chief. We have abatements here, the amount of...
Thirty-eight to 33.25.
Thirty-eight thousand 233,325 cents.
Make a motion, that's for the month of July.
That's for the month of July. Motion made and seconded to approve the abatement for the month of July. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes.
And I'll make a motion to approve the end of 2013 as submitted by the Fire Chief in the amount of $4,282.69.
I have a motion made and seconded to approve the end of 2013 in the amount of $4,282.69. Sixty-nine cents. All in favor? Second, I second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now it passes. As we go right through here, the planning board's... Go on right through this. Okay. Since the chairman of the personnel, is that you? No, that's Paul.
No, on Personnel, he is Health.
You got a list?
I got a list.
Everybody's smiling over there. After no good news. Watch out.
All righty then. I have a letter of resignation from Kenneth Pimental as a reserve police officer. He thanks us and thanks Carlton, but at this time, he has a full-time job, and it's taking away from any hours that he can really give to the reserve police officer. So I'll entertain a motion to accept his letter of resignation and send him a thank you.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I have a change of status for trainees both Taylor Deskey and Stephanie Pittsley as submitted by Chief Abbott for the Communications Department in the amount of $13.87. Do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the training and communications at the rate of $13.87 per hour.
And I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. I have a letter that I don't think I can fully read because of the potential litigation. But it is a letter from Christina Jusom, who, I can read part of it, wants to let us know that she's having second thoughts on retiring next year, and she is happy and she would like to stay on work full-time. She enjoys her job. So that's up for consideration.
I think we need to check with council.
I would totally agree with that.
We did. We checked, and we got some feedback that...
Yeah. We have one issue.
Correct.
Once you're committed, you're committed.
I agree with that. So if we could have, if we could have a ruling from Joe stating that, then...
Yep.
Okay. All right. Discuss, so do we want to hold off on the second part of this?
Yeah.
Okay.
We need to.
Okay. And then appoint change of status for Lois Amaral as a senior clerk to the Finance Committee. What do you think?
We have...
Do you really think Brad needs that help?
I know one thing, it'd be a much better-looking committee.
So do I have a motion to approve Lois Amaral as a senior clerk to the Finance Committee?
So moved.
And I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, Ms. Amaral.
We need to settle on the rate of pay, because we don't have a rate of pay for a non-union senior clerk or night clerk, I don't know if you want to call this, particularly for non-union. It's $15 and...
The bottom four, union, that was one of the...
Yeah.
I wrote it right on the sheet.
Can I get it?
Yep. And it's not in there, it's in the signature file.
Oh, it's in the signature file.
Yeah.
It's in the signature file.
I will...
Anyway.
I'll have a question.
That's a senior clerk, rate of pay is $15, and she's looking up the change. But we need to establish a non-union, in this case it's a night clerk, or the Financial Committee in this case.
Are we going against the Collective Bargaining Union?
No, this is non-union.
So we did, we are, I mean, and we did advertise, right? So anybody from the Collective Bargaining Union could have, okay, I just want to make sure that, before we get ourselves in trouble. So you just need to know what the rate of pay is going to be?
Right.
Do you have a recommendation to the board?
Well, I mean, we could make it just slightly below the union rate of pay.
All right. Do you want to, do you want to hold off on that, or do you want to just...
Well, what's the word, union rate of pay? Technical terms.
$15.67.
Sixty-seven. Fifteen sixty-seven. Fifteen? Fifteen? Fifteen, where were you? Okay?
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the amount of $15 per hour? If I said per meeting, you would be in so much trouble.
Oh. We wouldn't have a prayer.
Right.
They had a pay rate when it was posted. They had a pay rate when it was posted.
Oh, it did?
It did. What was the pay when it was posted? Do you remember?
Either 15.67 or 15.26, I'm not sure which one.
I don't think it was.
It was 15 and change.
Yeah.
All right. How about we entertain a motion to approve the rate of pay as posted?
That makes sense. I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're good to go. Don't abuse her. He does.
I can't. She's part of my church.
Oh, boy. Hey, how did you make out? Sorry. I'll make this real quick. How'd you make out with the tables, okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Excellent. No, Chuck took good care of us, and...
Oh, good.
I even, I told Chuck, thank you, he had everything there, everything ready to set up, so...
All right.
No complaints. You guys did a good job for us.
All right.
Louder.
Yeah, we don't get that often enough.
Louder. We don't get that very often.
You did a good job for us.
I have appoint Kevin Dismaris to the Tax Increment Board.
Okay. Comes along with being the chairman of the planning board, doesn't it?
Yes.
So I make that, I make a motion to appoint Kevin Dismaris to the Tax Increment Board.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Okay, that comes along with being the chairman of the planning board, doesn't it?
Yes.
So I make that, I make a motion to appoint Kevin Dismaris to the tax increment board.
I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
And I'll entertain a motion to reaffirm the vote as fiscal year sixteen reappointments on July seventeenth, two thousand and fifteen. I don't know if you can do that, because you will not add that. Well, then, I will
Can I make a motion? Can I make a motion? Why can't I, I'm a chairman.
Wait, we can make a motion to approve the reappointments, FY sixteen. Okay, so instead of reaffirming the vote, you can just make a motion to approve the reappointments for FY sixteen.
I make a motion to reapprove the appointments for fiscal year sixteen.
And I'll second that, all. Go ahead.
Ann up.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. All right, we have discussed Ms. Alexandra Gold's administrative assistant contract. And the board did approve that, and I think now we just need a motion to sign her contract.
Make a motion, we sign Ms. Gold's contract for two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and eighteen.
I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. I'm done. You're up.
Dates for the upcoming board of selectmen's meetings are August tenth and August twenty-fourth. Sounds good to me. Special town meeting items under old business, anything going on? Special town meeting items?
No, just that one so far. Bylaw change for the wording of the special town, any special articles that need to be submitted with explanations? All right, and then maybe that bus one.
All right.
But I think that, other than that, I don't
Let's just up a little budget, right?
Yeah.
You have time to deal with that in the fall, right?
Yeah, we'll have time.
Yeah.
Okay. Are we done?
I think we're done. We have executive session to go and to really discuss a couple of things. But I would suggest they wait until Mr. Sadek's available.
I agree, and if we're going to get together on the eleventh, then I think that we could probably break the police negotiations. We could probably do that right after that.
Both of those, I am?
Yeah.
Sounds like the plan, so
All right.
I ask you
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion made and I second it to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye. Who needs Sadek? Look at that. Whoa, what a team right there.
That's good.